All righty, everyone. Good evening. We want to call this meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners to order for October the 18th of 2021. And welcome those who are joining us by TV as well as those who are in our audience this evening. Our first item of business is our invocation. And we'll have Reverend Sam Craven, the senior pastor at Union Grove Baptist Church, who's with us this evening to offer our invocation. And we'll follow that by doing our pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that. So if you would, Pastor, come to the podium, sir.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this good day. We thank you for the blessings and the protection of this day. I thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your strength and love. I thank you for your grace, for your goodness. I thank you for the gospel of Jesus Christ. I thank you for Caldwell County, a wonderful place to work, to live, to play. I thank you for commissioners and what they stand for and what they do. I pray, Heavenly Father, that you would grant them wisdom and direction. I pray that you would continue to use them and make a difference in Caldwell County for the good. Lord, for this meeting, I would ask that you would bless it. We ask this, we pray this, in the sweet name of Jesus. Amen.
Please face the flag. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, there are no amendments to the agenda today.
All right. Hearing that there are no amendments to our agenda, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt our agenda as presented by our clerk.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Now, on a lighter subject, we usually never have snacks here for our meeting. And we've talked about it, and evidently, since Thomas Welch is going to be leaving us as our clerk, and this will be his last official meeting here, he's scheduled us quite a long agenda and thinks we're going to be here a while to need some snacks, all right?
The least I could do.
The least he could do on his parting way. So, thank you, Thomas, for taking care of us and for being our clerk for these past couple of years, I guess. I don't have an exact timeline, but we certainly understand about your leaving, but it's hard, hard on us. But I just wanted to say that as we began our meeting this evening. And so with that, we will get to our first item for decision, and that is to call for a public hearing at our November the 15th meeting to name a road. And Micah Kelly's here this evening. Micah, if you will, come forth and tell us what we need to be doing in reference to this road naming.
Evening, gentlemen. Just before my statement, I just want to say, Thomas, thank you very much for always helping me on these road names and doing all the legal stuff for the state and everything going forward. There's a lot of legal stuff that comes with these road names, and he's been very helpful helping me get through all this. So this one is just going to be a simple call for a vote. I have all the paperwork from all the homeowners already. They've already all signed. Basically, it's a driveway that is going through one person's property that he has given an easement to, to the Barnes in the back. And they have all agreed on the name, and they just want to have it for a 911 emergency services. And the road name they are proposing is Cordelia Way, which will be a private road for the Deautis and the Barnes families. And it's just a simple vote.
All right. So hearing the recommendation from Micah, do I hear a motion that we name this road Cordelia Way?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we name this road Cordelia Way, as recommended by Mike.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And then, looks like we need to schedule a public hearing.
Yep. So we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting for that one.
So we need to call for a motion to schedule a public hearing for November the 15th and the naming of an additional road. Do we have that road name yet?
That meeting will be for Cordelia Way.
All right.
The road name we're naming tonight is a different road.
Okay.
So I can skip to that one if you want. There was another thing on the agenda before that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I was looking for. Are you under the consent?
Yeah, I've got.
Is it under the consent, or we got a whole different line item for that?
This one's for decision, and then the hearing is for Rocky Knob. I've got two. One's to call the vote. That would be Cordelia Way. We'll be voting on the 15th.
Okay.
The November.
And then we need to approve Rocky Knob tonight?
Well, actually, talking with the homeowners, they would like to reject Rocky Knob Hideaway, which was the proposed road. And I've actually got a statement for Mr. Mark Little, who's been leading the effort up there, and they would like it to be called Rocky Knob Tower Road. His statement says here, "We wish to change the name of the road to Rocky Knob Tower Road. The rationale is simple and respectful. By adding 'tower,' we intend to recognize that this road had a historical attribute in the naming of the formal function of the use as to attain the right-of-way to the Rocky Knob Fire Tower." And there was a old fire tower at the end of the road.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I'm a little confused.
I'm a lot.
Yeah. We kind of merged two into one.
I think we put cart before the horse.
Cordelia Road, all you're doing tonight is setting a public hearing on that one for November 15. And then on the Rocky Knob Road, or whatever it's going to be called, you're actually doing the public hearing tonight and voting on the name for that one.
Okay. So we've got a public hearing scheduled for Rocky Knob Tower Road.
Yes, that'll be for now.
No, they, yeah.
But on the first one, you need.
We got to go back and do the public hearing.
Set up a hearing for November 15.
And withdraw the motion to name the road because we don't have, we haven't had the public hearing first.
That's right.
Isn't that right?
Yeah.
So I'll entertain the motion to withdraw the last.
Cordelia. I withdraw my motion.
All right. So Commissioner Branch has withdrew his motion to name Cordelia Way. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so we have withdrawn that, and we're going to go right back now to the agenda. And the agenda says we need to call for a public hearing at the November 15th meeting. That's the first item up for business.
Yes, that meeting will be to vote for Cordelia Way.
All right. So do I hear a motion that we call for a public hearing for the November 15th meeting to consider naming the road Cordelia Way? Somebody to say so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we set up a public hearing for the Cordelia Road name.
All right, for November the 15th. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Now, next, on our agenda, you're not in here next, so you can go sit down.
So what's the one for Rocky Knob?
What's the one for Rocky?
Yeah.
Where is it at?
It's under the public hearings for tonight.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I need to do out of me.
So next, we're going to have an offer to purchase county-owned property, and our interim county manager, Mr. Tony Hilton, is going to enlighten us here. And let me say this while I'm here, that this will be Tony's last meeting as our interim county manager in the driver's seat, if you will. So again, I wanted to say how much we have appreciated your time and tenure and the things that you've done getting us through this transition period. And thank you for all of your help in that. And so we'll move forward then for this offer to purchase county-owned property.
Okay. Before I get into that, I just want to say thanks for trusting me to be the interim manager. Tried to do as good as I could with it, and look forward to working with Mr. Duncan, and hopefully we can do some good things for the citizens moving forward. So that item on the agenda, the county owns a lot at 1425 Roy Dula Place. It's like a house lot. And we obtained this through foreclosure back in 1994, so the county's owned it for a long time. Recently, a gentleman contacted me, and he's interested in purchasing this lot from the county. So we talked about it a little bit, and he's offered us $3,000. So what we have before you tonight is, do you want to accept that or not? If you do, it will go through the upset bid process, so we'll advertise it, and there'll be a 10-day period where anybody that wants to make a higher bid will be given the opportunity to do so. They have to bid at least 10% more to move that along. Once we go through a 10-day period with no new bids, then it will be ready to be sold to the person who holds the highest bid. So if no one else bids, we'd sell it to this gentleman for $3,000.
All right. And I've done a little bit of research on that today, just for the commissioners and those who are joining in and hear about this, but there was a question earlier today about some more detailed information about this piece of property for our public. And so you can locate that at our Register of Deeds office. And if you'll reference book number 1105, page 101, and the year of 94, or the North Carolina PIN number 2748035296, it will give you a description of what the property is. But it contains more or less than .007 tenths of an acre. So there was a question about that earlier today, and in full disclosure, you can go and find out about that property if you'd like to.
And Mr. Chairman, that information will also be in the notice that will be published in the newspaper for upset bid.
Yes, sir. All right. So thank you for that clarification as well. So what's the pleasure of the board this evening? Do we first need to have a motion to sell this property, Mr. Attorney?
If the board intends to accept this offer, I think the motion would be to accept this offer conditioned upon publication in the 10-day upset bid period.
All right. So who would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept the offer that has been presented to the county for $3,000 pursuant to the advertising, appropriate advertising and upset bid process.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you, Tony, for that and for the clarification for our attorney. Next, we'll enter into our public hearing section. So again, Micah will come up, and we will hold a public hearing then on the naming of a fork off of Rocky Knob Road. So tell us what, we're naming it again?
Yes, sir. So the people that live on the road and the landowners have proposed Rocky Knob Tower Road.
Tower Road.
Yep, tower.
Now, since we probably did this sometime other, and now we're having a public hearing, do we have to have something else changed or anything to change the name on this road after it's already went through one time and come back to us? Mr. Attorney?
Good question.
I do not know, because I didn't know this was going to happen. So I didn't. So I'll be blunt with you. I don't know. What's your legal opinion? My opinion is, since it was advertised for a public hearing, you can conduct the public hearing, and if no one has any comment. We can change the name? I suspect that this slight change to the name would be all right. But I, like I said, didn't know this was going to happen, so I didn't research the question. That's enough for me. I'll make a motion we name the Rocky Knob Tower Road.
All right. So let's do this. Let's open the public hearing first, and we'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak this evening that has signed up and/or in our audience that would like to speak to the changing of this name of Rocky Knob Tower Road?
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up. Anybody here that wants to object to that or adhere to it and say you're happy about it?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question in the materials that, maybe I misread it, but I thought they wanted to change it to something different we had proposed.
The original name was proposed as Rocky Knob Hideaway, as there was already a green street sign up there. We later found out that that road sign was basically ordered and put up there by just an individual that lived on the road. It had no actual standing or was actually even entered into the 911 system. It was just a sign somebody had placed there. And in finding out that that road name did not go, I have letters and emails and voicemails from the residents of it who would like to reject the Hideaway name. They do not want their name to be Rocky Knob Hideaway, as was originally put forth in the first call meeting.
And the information that I had, I thought the recommendation was Rocky Knob Trail. And then if we decided to name the road that the tower used to be on, they were requesting Rocky Knob Tower Road.
That was one of the things that was put forth, but unfortunately, it did not meet the amount of votes. In order for it to go through to you guys, it has to reach at least 51% of the residents, and it never made it past, I believe 20% was the last I counted, for Rocky Knob Trail. Rocky Knob Tower Road, right now, is 68% of the residents.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
There was a total of four names submitted. There was Rocky Knob Hideaway, Rocky Knob Trail, Rocky Knob Tower Road, and Rocky Knob Lane was the four submitted.
And so to clarify for me, then you just took a vote of those four names, and you've got 60-some percent that wants it at Rocky Knob Tower?
68% of the residents have voted for Rocky Knob Tower Road, yes.
How many residents we talking about?
In total, there are 26 landowners, and there's only 12 actual homeowners. And we don't count just the homeowners, we also count the landowners because they are potential homeowners.
So do the landowners have a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And y'all, you got responses from all of them?
Not all of them, no. I have here.
But you got the 51%.
Yes, I got my 51%, that was needed.
All right. So we have declared the public hearing open. There's nobody else to speak. Does anybody else have a question for Micah? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at this time, and I'll call the question and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in naming this Rocky Knob Tower Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go back again, naming this, as Micah said, Rocky Knob Tower Road.
All right. Anybody else? With that, I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that one carries unanimously too, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you again.
That was fun. I didn't hear Rocky top anywhere.
Yeah. All right. Next is a public hearing for an EDC tax base incentive request. Ms. Deborah Murray, our executive director of the EDC, is here this evening.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hello, Deborah.
I'm excited to bring this to you tonight. We're asking for a tax incentive for a company that started from scratch, husband and wife team, great entrepreneurial story, started with nothing and ended up 10 years later, 75 full-time employees. And they're busting at the seams, and they need to consolidate all their properties and relocate. They have the choice of going out of the county, but they'd like to stay here. We'd like to do all we can to keep them here. And they have found a location in Granite Falls that they've proposed to buy. And if they go there, they will have to build a new 30,000-square-foot building. And they're asking for a tax base incentive just for the new construction of the new building. They'll be able to move there and get started with the building that exists there, but we are asking for a 75% property tax grant for five years for the new construction only to begin when the building is complete.
All right. And so hearing that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody signed up to speak.
No.
And I assume no one's here to speak in reference to that, or they would have signed up, so we'll declare the public hearing closed and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this tax base incentive.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the tax base incentive requested for surf pro by our EDC director, Deborah Murray.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And next, we have a public hearing for a proposed property sale. And so Deborah, I'll let you start that and give us a narrative of what that involves.
Well, this has happened a lot faster than we thought it would. The county, a few months back, agreed to buy property for a new industrial park. We began marketing it and right away found a client that wants to buy all of it and develop it as their headquarters and a manufacturing facility. And they are in the process of due diligence once we agree to sell, or not sell, this property to them. We bought that property for $374,000, and that we are selling it for $386,000, which includes the $12,000 engineering fees that we incurred to convince us that it was a good site for us to develop as an industrial park. The new company will bring significant new investment and jobs. Their average wages for their entry-level jobs will be more than 10% above the county's private sector average wage. We stand a lot to gain by considering this, and we're asking for your approval to sell these folks the property so that they can get on with it.
All right. So with that, I'll declare the public hearing open. And have we had anybody sign up for that? And no one here, I assume, wants to speak to that? All right, not see any hands go up, so I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I say just a few words?
You can.
This property is, if you approve this, is being sold differently than I can recall us having sold property before. The way we typically do this, like we did earlier this evening, is accept and offer contingent upon advertising for upset bid. This is different. This is for a specific economic development project. There will be no notice, no upset bid period. This will be sold directly to the industry that is planning to develop it. And the procedure is a little bit different. There are a couple of findings that the board needs to make. I'm sorry, a finding or determination that the board needs to make, which is to determine the probable average hourly wage to be paid to the workers. And I understand Ms. Murray has given the board that information. The statute also requires that the company has got to be contractually bound to reconvey the property to the county if they do not do this project within, and the statute says five years. The contract that the company has already signed would require them to resell the property to the county for the same purchase price that they're paying the county if they have not built this industrial facility within three years. That's in the contract, and there'll be a restrictive covenant in the deed as well.
Good enough. Thank you, Deborah.
Their average wages will be substantially more than what I have told you, and we'll know a little bit more about that later.
Have they given us, given you indication of how many employees it might be?
Yes, but we'll talk about that in an incentive meeting when we've finished everything, probably next month on the 15th, if that's okay.
Yep.
You'll be very happy.
All right. So with that, do I hear a motion that we sell our industrial park that we recently purchased, but now we've already got a buyer who wants to buy it from us, so?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with this sale.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just like that, it's gone.
Thank you, and we hope we can turn around and do this again very quickly.
Bring it home.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have a quasi-judicial hearing scheduled for a special use permit for RV Park, and Ms. Shelley Stevens is here as our planning director. And so typically, I throw this to our county attorney to run these in a more judicial manner. So, Mr. Attorney, you're at the helm, sir.
All right, thank you. So the first one we have is for the recreational vehicle park, which is proposed to be located, forgive me, in the 5,000 block of Parkview Road. So Ms. Stevens, I know, is going to testify. Is there anyone else that wants to testify with regard to the proposed RV Park? All right. And Ms. Stevens, if you would, please be either sworn or affirmed.
I swear, affirm, you have a preference. Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? I do.
Ms. Stevens, for the record, let me ask you to identify yourself, your name, your position with Caldwell County, and a little bit about your training and background in planning.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good day. So my name is Shelley Stevens. I'm the Caldwell County Planning Director. I got my undergrad degree at Carolina in Public Policy, my graduate degree in Urban Planning from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. I worked in the private sector for a couple of years, and then also in the public sector as I currently do. So I've been in planning since about 2013. And if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Go ahead, tell us what you want to about this application.
Okay, thank you. So just to give you the basic information of this application and an overview as usual, and you may ask any questions you might have. So this is our second special use permit request of the year and the first of the evening, and the request is being made by Kevin Ritchie, the applicant. Logan Ritchie is also an applicant listed on the application, but the current property owner is Perry Lee Mitchell, and Kevin Ritchie does have a contract to purchase the property from Perry Mitchell. And the location of this property is in eastern Caldwell County. Many of you are familiar with the area. And it's north of and fronting Parkview Road, and it's east of Sunk Mountain Lane and west of Duck Creek Road, and we'll look at a map here shortly. And the site conditions are, it's very wooded, and it has two large and two small ponds, and there's no flood plain to worry about or watershed-protected or critical areas. And the current acreage is 89.54 acres, and he does not plan to subdivide this. He hopes to use the whole parcel, and we'll look at the site plan. The zoning of the parcel is residential agricultural, and the elevation varies from about 1,500 feet to 1,700 feet per our GIS system. And the surrounding zoning is residential agricultural as well, and that's in the north, south, east, and west of the property. So here's an aerial photo of the property to give you an idea of what it looks like. And you can see the lakes there and the acreage listed. And they do plan to have both tents and RV spots, and that'll be shown on the site plan, which is in your packets. And they hope to have 119 RV sites and 34 tent sites, and the tent sites would be in the northern part of the parcel, and the RV sites would be on the eastern and western And this is an allowed special use listed in the zoning ordinance for residential agricultural zoning, so that's important. And the planning board and I did review the application against the ordinance requirements, so there's a list of conditions in the ordinance, and they have met all those conditions. We worked with them, and they have met all those. And then if they were to get their special use permit tonight, after issuance of the special use permit, they would have to also have site plan approval for their zoning permits as a separate process. So when they seek their zoning permits, there will be a site plan approval for those too. And there is a draft findings of fact document in your packets. And at the time, this staff report was written, and also at the planning board meeting and after, we have not received any evidence that harm would come to health, safety, or welfare of the community or the neighboring properties from this proposal. And that is a listed item in our zoning ordinance that we have to look at for this. So with. So with three zonings, it's required by state law, but in this case, it's listed in the ordinance, so it's kind of like a condition. We have to look at it. And if you look at the picture here on our screen, on the left is where I was standing. You can see an aerial view of what the site looks like again. And then there's a forward facing photo I took on the right-hand side, and you can see there are some large trees there. And they do plan to have a 30-foot opaque buffer surrounding the whole property, all 90 acres, and that would meet both the buffering requirement and their setback requirements of 30 feet surrounding the property. And they have oak and white pine, cedar hemlock, crepe myrtles, and boxwoods. And this is the actual site plan, which is also in your packets. And as you can see, there are lots of RV sites on the right and left, and then the tent sites up north. They would have a six-foot fence of woven wire, not chain link, surrounding the entire property, plus that 30-foot buffer. And they also have a gated entry there on the western side of the property, where you see the entrance. That's about 125 feet off of Parkview Road. And they would also have a security guard there at that gated entrance, and they would have a 21-day stay limit, no alcohol sales. And they're planning for their hours of operation to be seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They also stated that they would not be allowing side-by-sides or four-wheelers in the park. And they have also hired a soil scientist and a professional engineer, and they are developing an engineered septic system for them. And environmental health has also seen this site plan and has approved the site plan. As for the entrance, they have their DOT permit, which in this case, for this special use permit, is required. And there's a very low traffic count in this area. It's about 350 average annual daily traffic count, so 350 vehicles per day. And DOT is requiring that they have 75 feet of pavement touching Parkview Road, if you look on the western side there at the entrance. So it'll be 35 feet with 20-foot radii. And then if you go into the property, there will be a 50-foot area, so as you're driving in, for 50 feet, it will slowly narrow down to 20 feet. And that's the width of the road throughout the whole site. So they will have a 20-foot road. And let's see, other important factors. And the fire department is aware of this proposal and the following one we're going to look at as well. And they said they would send out tanker trucks if needed. They also have a store, they have bathrooms, they have a telephone as required, they would have a splash pad, and all of that stuff would be right at the entrance there, you can see, on the left-hand side of the site plan. And they want to title it Parkview Recreation RV Resort if they get their special use permit. And then looking at the Planning Board's recommendation, it was approval of the special use permit contingent upon receipt of remaining requirement per the zoning ordinance conditions, which in this case was the DOT driveway permit, which they got. So the Planning Board would recommend approval of that.
Ms. Stevens, based upon your review of the application and everything that's been submitted with it, is it your opinion that this application meets all of the requirements of the ordinance for the issuance of the special use permit?
Yes.
Any member of the board have any questions for Ms. Stevens?
Right here in the middle of this thing, it's got this Kathy H. Pritchard and Cecil J. Winkle. What is the, what does that mean?
That's actually a separate property owner, and they're very much aware of this project. They did attend the Planning Board meeting and ask a few questions, and they are okay with the project. And by law, we had to notify all adjacent property owners, and we also do that before the Planning Board meeting, just as an extra step, even though we don't have to do it before the Planning Board meeting, but we do it both times, before this meeting and that meeting. And, yeah, they had a few questions, but they were okay with it.
Okay.
I have a question, and this is one of those sidebar things, but I didn't see anything about what they're going to do with their trash and the trash they're generating there. Do you have any knowledge of that?
I don't. That wasn't a listed condition, but that's a very important factor, and I don't know if they're willing to testify about that. I know they have a legal obligation to not have trash all over it.
Ms. Stevens, before we get to anyone else, please. Any other questions from the board for Ms. Stevens? Okay. And no one spoke up? I'm sorry, no one has signed up, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone who has any questions for Ms. Stevens based on her testimony? Let the record show that no one other than the board members have any questions for Ms. Stevens? Okay, thank you. The gentleman who wanted to speak to the trash issue, would you come up and either be sworn or affirmed by the clerk, please?
Let's you let the hand on the Bible there and raise it rightly. You swear the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Let me ask you to state your name and address and tell us your relation to the applicant, please.
My name's Logan Ritchie. My address is 6201 Duck Creek Road. And me and my brother are going to be in together on this project.
You and your brother are the applicants?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. There was a question about trash.
We're just going to do, we're going to have trash pickup from each RV site every day, and we're going to have dumpsters, have just trash trucks come pick them up and take them.
Okay, so you're planning to have dumpsters on-site?
Yes, sir.
Because I know, I've been to some RV parks, and that's typically what they do, but I just didn't see that anywhere in all of this, and I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the, you know, but we're not going to require the campers to take it to the dumpster. They're just going to put it at their site, and we'll go by and pick it up and take it.
That's fine. I'll just, trash has become a big issue for us of late.
And then I don't know.
And how people are going to dispose of it.
There's one other thing that she didn't mention, like, we're going to do like golf cart rental, like electric golf carts, you know, and rent them, and that's the only thing else that we're going to do.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Other questions for Mr. Ritchie from the board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you.
Is there any further evidence or testimony? All right. Then the quasi judicial hearing is an end, and I'll turn it over, back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. After hearing the testimony of the applicants and our Planning Director this evening, I'll call the question and ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this special use permit for the RV park.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit for the RV park as presented this evening.
And if I may, does the board approve the actual order with findings of fact and the order?
Yeah, that was up there, they took it down, I didn't see it. Yes, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. So having the motion and approving the findings of fact, any other discussion or comment for any of the board members?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to tell you guys, thank you for your investment here in the county. It's something that I think that we've needed for a long time, and I think you guys would be real well with it, but I appreciate your, your, your innovation and ideas and going out there and making this happen, so I wish you the best of luck.
And I was a little curious about, well, let's go like for occupancy tax, like motels and all that kind of stuff for us?
Don't think so.
Okay.
He's trying, he's trying his best to figure out how to get something out of y'all.
I'm going to help us get water.
There you go.
All right. So we've got a motion to approve this RV park. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And I'll say again what Commissioner Potter said, but thank you guys for your efforts. And I know you've put a lot into it to this point, but you've got a long way to go, because I've seen some big trees over there.
Yeah, more.
All righty. So next, we have another quasi judicial hearing for a special use permit for a solar energy system. And again, I'll kick it back to our county attorney, Mr. David Lackey.
So this is an application for a special use permit for a solar energy system to be located at 5355 Fields Place off of Taylorsville Road, and the applicant is B&amp;R Renewable Energies LLC. And who would like to testify in addition to Ms. Stevens with respect to this? If you would, please come up to the clerk and be either sworn or affirmed.
Do you swear that the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Ms. Stevens, again, briefly identify yourself and your qualifications and experience in planning, and then tell us about this application.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Shelley Stevens, Caldwell County Planning Director, attended Chapel Hill undergrad, and then got my planning degree, my master's degree, from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. And I've been a planner since about 2013. And I've worked in the private sector for a few years and also the public sector.
All right. And tell us about this application, please.
Okay, thank you. I'll be as concise as I can while trying to hit on the most important points that are all in your packet there and in the zoning ordinance. So this is the third request of the year for a special use permit. And the applicant this time is Jonathan Yates, and he is representing B&amp;R Renewable Energies LLC. And again, this property is under contract with Terry Lee West. B&amp;R Renewable Energies plans to purchase the property if they are allowed to have the special use permit. And the location, as Mr. Lackey mentioned, is 5355 Fields Place, which is off of NC-90. It's just north of Taylorsville Road and east of Union Baptist Road. And it is wooded with some open field and also some sparse natural vegetation. And again, there's no flood plain or watershed to worry about on the site. And the acreage, which he hopes to purchase, is 10.01 acres. They would purchase the whole property rather than leasing like we sometimes see. And then they would construct a 200-foot by 200-foot fenced compound in which the solar energy system would be contained. And it's also zoned residential agricultural, like our last project. The elevation is 1,320 feet, and there's residential agricultural zoning surrounding the parcel with some general business to the southwest. And this is a map using ArcMap and our GIS layers, and that information bubble points to exactly where the solar energy system would be located if this is approved. And again, it would be a 200-foot by 200-foot fenced compound, which is .981 acres, and that would be within the 10.01 acres that he owns. And there would be six rows of solar panels and 360 total panels, and it would be a 96.2 kilowatt system. And that just means, in layman terms, or translated to something people would want to know, that it could power about 13 homes per year. And Blue Ridge Energy does have a purchase agreement with them to buy this power and sell it. And this parcel is a larger parcel that this is pointing to, but actually, it's been subdivided. That information just hasn't translated into our GIS system quite yet, but we'll look at the site plan and the plat here shortly. And again, this is an allowed special use listed in the zoning ordinance for this zoning district, the residential agricultural zoning district. So the request is valid in that regard, and the Planning Board and I did look at this request like the other, and we saw that all the conditions were met and worked with the applicant to meet those, have them meet those conditions. And if they are issued a special use permit tonight, after that, they will have to get a driveway permit, which is not required before special use permit approval for solar energy systems. And then they would also, again, have to have site plan approval for their zoning permit, and then evidence that their decommissioning plan, which is an important component of the conditions listed in this section, evidence that their decommissioning plan is recorded with the Register of Deeds before electrical inspection. And again, there's a draft findings of fact document in your packets. And at the time of drafting this report, and then also at the Planning Board meeting and thereafter, we have not received any evidence that this use would harm health, safety, or welfare. And this just shows, again, the subdivided 10 acres there in the northwestern portion of this site plan. And then you can also see the 200-foot by 200-foot fence compound, and it would be a chain link fence, seven feet tall, with a foot of barbed wire surrounding. And you can see the six rows of panels with 360 photovoltaic cells. And then you can see NC-90 kind of crossing the page there, and then Fields Place comes up off of that. And they have recorded a 45-foot right-of-way coming off of Fields Place, you can see there, that would lead to the solar site, and they would have a 12-foot gravel road in there. And then cutting through the middle of the page, you can see another easement shown, and that would be their utility easement. And they do plan to have phase-three power, and they would use that 30-foot utility easement and have underground power. And also, it's important to note that this solar energy system wouldn't be visible from NC-90. And they also would have a 15-foot buffer on the north side and a 20-foot buffer on the south, east, and west sides, and this would be the mature vegetation that's already there, the trees that are already existing. So if you look down there past the field, there are a lot of large trees there, up to 80 feet in height. And that does meet the buffering requirements of the ordinance. And this is a close-up view of the compound, just so you can look at it. You can see the fenced area and then the rows. And they do meet the setback requirements as well, and they greatly exceed the setbacks in many cases. The front setback is 784 feet, for example, and the south side is 176.5 feet from the property line. So it would not be visible. And again, trying to hit on all the important parts here, they did send a solar glare analysis to the North Carolina Commander's Council to look at military flight paths and if the view would be obscured, and the Commander's Council got back to them and said that they would not obscure any of their views. And they don't tend to have problems with solar panels, they said. And also, if they were within five nautical miles of any airport, they would have to also notify the airport or the FAA, depending on what kind of airport it was, but they're not within five nautical miles of any airport. And there will be no lighting at the site either, so no sound or smell or light. And then the Planning Board recommendation, since they met all the special use permit conditions listed in the zoning ordinance, is approval of the special use permit.
Ms. Stevens, based on your review of the application and the material submitted with it, is your opinion that the application meets all of the requirements of the county's ordinance for the issuance of this special use permit?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Stevens from the board? Is there anyone else that has any questions for Ms. Stevens? Let the record show there are none? And then whoever wants to testify next?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Frank Longest. I'm an attorney practicing law in Burlington, North Carolina. Our firm is North Carolina counsel for the applicant. I'm here for a very short period of time before you. The purpose, since this is quasi judicial, is to let you know that a North Carolina attorney is here and present, and it's my pleasure to introduce you to Jonathan Yates, a South Carolina licensed attorney, who many of you may have heard in the past, but we who do a lot of special use planning know Jonathan. He does special use permits in solar panels, a lot in cellular phone tower locations in North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Georgia, and Florida. So it's my pleasure to introduce you to Jonathan Yates of Charleston, South Carolina.
Thank you very much, Frank. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, Jonathan Yates. First and foremost, Frank has some very kind introduction, but I'm sort of new to solar. And fortunately for me, in doing my first solar installation, I ran across an old friend, Shelley. As I come to a county, a lot depends on who I'm going to be dealing with in terms of the plan and the zoning department. In Caldwell County, you have something special here with Shelley. I asked 99 to 100 stupid questions. She never laughed at me, or at least till she hung up the phone. But no, I just want to point out her professionalism in helping us get through the process. Here tonight with Richard Rosenfeld, who's the managing member of B&amp;R. Richard and I have worked together for many years in the cellular industry, putting up wireless infrastructure throughout the southeast. Richard has decided to try something new, building on his experience from developing wireless infrastructure, now developing energy. And it's an interesting time. wireless infrastructure, now developing energy, and it's interesting time. In the Charleston paper just two weeks ago, you know, when you get into something new, it's like when you, when you're looking at a car you're thinking about buying, you start to see them everywhere. I've been reading all about solar and seeing all kinds of articles. In the Charleston paper two weeks ago, I saw something interesting where they're hoping in the U.S. that by the year 2035, we're going to be 40% solar. That's equivalent to every household in the U.S. will be via solar. As I'm dreading the next couple of weeks, not knowing what gas is going to cost me at the pump, scared to death, and I know a lot of folks are worried with the winter coming on, with heat and oil, what that's going to be, all this helps. Richard, I think, found an excellent piece of property for what he's trying to do. This is a 47, 47-acre tract owned by Terry Lee West. They got the subdivision approved by the county back on June 8th of 2021. Richard's fixing to buy 10 acres if this meets with your approval, and we're going to give it, give it a shot, try to learn solar. He has reached what we call a PPA or a Power Purchase Agreement with Blue Ridge, so what is produced there will go on to Blue Ridge. And I think, and particularly taking a look at the site, talking to Shelley after she got to visit it, it's a great location. It's a great location. You've got the tree cover and topography between the site, Taylorsville Road, closest residential structure, I think it's about 620 feet away. And again, we went through all the paces this summer, working with the North Carolina Commanders Council on the solar glare and that kind of thing, so. All in all, I think this, I hope this board will find this a win-win for not only B&amp;R, but also for the county and for Blue Ridge. But I'm here to answer any and all questions, and Richard Rosenfeld's with us here as well. So anything that I can answer, I think he can, but anything you have, we're here to answer, and we thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Yates from the board? Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Yates? Is that all the evidence for the petitioner?
If we could, Mr. Chairman, we would like to make part of the record the application and the notebook with all the addendums and attachments, and ask that that be part of the record for this public hearing and a basis for what you make your decision on. Thank you.
And Ms. Stevens, is all of that part of your, your record of proceedings?
Yes, that's correct. It was all submitted for the packet.
And that will, that is in the record?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. And I believe there's no one here to be heard in opposition. Let the record show there's no one here to speak in opposition. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Hearing the testimony given this evening in this hearing, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting this special use permit for this solar energy system?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this special use permit for the solar system.
Any other discussion or comment? All right, with that, I would say I appreciate you gentlemen coming all this way this evening to be a part of our meeting, pretty good traveling distance, and I hope, hope you have a safe trip home, spend the night, go up and look at the leaves tomorrow on your way home or something.
Well, you can go stay with him.
Mr. Chairman, this is a side. I did decide to enjoy my ride down Highway 18. It was beautiful.
Yes, sir.
After a couple more days, the leaves will be in all their glory.
Yes, sir.
I did see some color from maple trees already.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. So with all that, I'll call the question, all in favor of adopting this motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well. So thank you, gentlemen, again, and appreciate your interest in Caldwell County. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda for the evening. Our interim county manager, Mr. Tony Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Church. On our consent agenda tonight, we have several items. The first is to approve a budget revision for the Sheriff's Department. This will allow them to spend $22,576 from their asset seizure funds to purchase surveillance The next item is to approve a budget revision for the Finance Department to allow for the hiring and training of a new staff person to replace a future retiree, and it also covers the payout of vacation time for this retiree. I think you all probably know, but Sandra Gibbs has decided to retire after 36 years with the county, so she's going to be difficult to replace, and I appreciate you doing this to help us do that. The next is a budget revision for the Health Department for $115,000, and this will provide temporary funding to hire public health nurse, school, health liaisons for COVID-19. The next item is a budget revision to spend $644,000 from the Water Fund to replace the roof at the Resource Center, which is where the Water Department's administrative offices are located. This is a side note on this one, this will, this is based off a quote we have, but we are going to have to go back and formally bid this because of the size of it, so it could be less than this. We know it's, this is kind of the top of what it could be, so it's potential it could be less. There'll be a little process we'll go through with that. The next one is to approve a budget revision for the Department of Social Services. It's an extra $74,175 in a federal low-income energy assistance program. This is no local dollars, and this is an important thing, is it gets into cold weather to help people who need help with their utility bills. The next one is to approve a change order for the animal control building project. This will add $25,997 to the cost of the project, and it will add curbing and guttering for all the asphalt areas. This was mistakenly left out by the architects, and we had to go back and add this so that we can proceed. The next one is to approve an easement for Duke Energy at Sheraw Road. This is part of the gas-to-energy project at the landfill, allow them to run the lines they need for that. The next one is a, also a Duke Energy easement at Government Way, that's the animal shelter that will allow them to run power to the new building. Next one is to approve a budget revision for roof maintenance projects, $35,914 to repair various roofs throughout the county to help us get through the winter. We've discussed this with maintenance a few times, and there's some roof issues we'll need to deal with eventually, but this should get us through until spring. The next one is to approve the Sheriff's Office request to seek a nuisance abatement. The next one is for JCPC to return $341.36 of unspent funds back to the state, and that happens about every year when they finish their program. It usually doesn't end to the penny, so there's a slight amount like that. The next one is a resolution to cap the tax rate in a potential Sawmills Rescue District, and you know you've been doing that for all the rescue districts we create, capping the maximum tax rate. The next one is to approve tri-county raceway permit, and that'll let them have their race if they need to due to rain delay. The next one is to appoint members to the Caldwell County Voluntary Agricultural District. And Seth had brought this to us, and this would allow you to, to appoint those members. The last one is to approve a budget revision to update the county website, $58,419. This will come from the ARP funds. This would allow us to, to update our website, make it more modern and more functional, and that'll get us through this year's portion of that cost. And that's your consent agenda.
Tony, I sort of got a question about this change order. I mean, I was contracted for years, and if I missed something, I ended up beating it. I don't understand why we have to pay for this on something that hates.
That's a good point. It's a good point. It's not the contractor that missed it, it's the architect, didn't put it in the plans, it went to the contractor, so.
Well.
Yeah, I don't like it either.
I have a slightly wish.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
I don't think that's cool.
I don't like it either, but I'm not sure what else to do about it.
All right, any other questions about the consent agenda or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as described by our interim county manager, Tony Hilton.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well. At this time, we're going to, I'll make a motion, and we're going to enter into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318,11A6, and that is to discuss a personnel matter. We don't anticipate any decisions out of that meeting, I don't think, it's just general information. So with that, all in favor of entering into our closed session, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and those who have watched us by TV, and we hope you have a good evening.